All right, we've called this special meeting to order this morning. Let be noted that all council members are present with the exception of Mayor Miller and Councilman Peterson. Our first item on the agenda is any remarks from any visitors. Item number three, workshop item on presentation by On Point Insights related to proposal to conduct a citywide survey.
Mayor, Mayor, Mayor Protem and Members Council, a couple of weeks ago, we had the strategic plan. During that strategic plan, I mentioned to you that we had reached out to a couple of vendors to look at doing a citywide survey. The first vendor indicated that it would take anywhere from six to eight months. We asked for a quote also, and we've never provided a quote. It's always been my philosophy, if someone can't provide a quote, I probably can't afford it. In addition to that, the six to eight months really didn't do us any good. And so started doing some other research, and we came across On Point Insights, Ron Gailey. And he had some experience locally here within your packet. I provided you a summary of some of the cities that he's been working with. Keller, Bernie, Capel, Lago Vista, Richland Hills, Saginaw, and West University Place. And part of this type survey that he provides, when Ray and I met with him, it was a really easy-to-flow survey for our residents to be able to have input. In addition to that, it wasn't like a really lengthy survey. Also, at the very end of the survey, once the survey is completed, it allows us to remotely be able to log in and look at a lot of the information, be able to prepare online type dashboards. We could filter it by, you know, questions by the age, gender, time in the city, and also other relevant characteristics. We could actually quadrant the city out into quadrants to kind of understand a little bit about where the responses are coming from. And when I talked to y'all about it, he offers a kind of a discount of more years that you provide. Again, now that we're looking at doing a two to three year strategic plan, the thought would be, maybe it might be practical to do a three-year survey, do a beginning survey, give us a baseline, and then throughout the next two years, come back and do surveys, see how good we're doing. But as I spoke to council, council had some questions about how we would reach out to the residents, be able to get this information, and just had a little bit of questions about it. And so we reached out to him, we gave him some of your concerns, as well as I wanted him to go through, kind of show you some of the type of questions that would be asked, and then how at the very end, what that would look like once you get the results. And again, it's all about the results and be able to implement the results and be able to analyze the results to put it in some type format that we can use as we start working on developing our budgets in the upcoming year. His process is about a little over two-month process, of course. Putting the questions together is just a little bit of time, and then opening it up for about a little over a couple of weeks to be able to have it for input. So at this time, I'm going to turn you over to Ron. Ron's remote here. So Ron, hopefully you can hear us.
I can hear you well. Can you hear me?
We can. I'm going to turn it over to you, Ron, now.
Perfect. Now, I can't really see what's on the screen. I guess it's me, right?
It's you.
Okay, let me do a, let me do a two-minute introduction, maybe three. But so my background, I have been the research director at two different banks, where I was a peer to senior executives at the bank, and I helped them do, get the research they needed to make strategy decisions. And I learned that they didn't want long reports, they didn't want something difficult, but they did want it to be complete and thoughtful and well-designed, whatever we did. So I did that, and then I left banking, and I went to Coca-Cola. I was the research director in Asia, so I was responsible for 14 countries across Asia, including China and Japan, but also Vietnam and Philippines and Thailand and others. And my responsibility there was to help senior executives at Coca-Cola with their strategies. And I did that for eight years and rather enjoyed that. It was a good experience. And I did learn that you just can't have a long, complicated report when you're done and actually make good use of it. They, on the other hand, they didn't want me to just tell them what to do. They wanted to be able to visualize it and see what to do. And so anyway, I left Coca-Cola and started my own company. And along the way, Bernie Texas came to us and asked if we'd helped them with their citizen survey. And I looked at his survey, he had one they'd been doing every year. And it had a lot of good information. I mean, nothing really wrong with the information. It was just hard to make decisions with it. And so, and it was also very long, probably 20 minutes long. And I said, gee, we got to get this down to like eight to 10 minutes. And, and so I thought about it, and I came up with a design that made it short because of the way we do it, and, but yet he didn't lose anything. And so, as a matter of fact, he gained a lot. And, and then instead of giving him a long report, I gave him a dashboard so that in the end, he could visualize it and he could ask his own questions along the way. And he loved it. And that's why I've grown in Texas. Ben Thatcher has been telling everybody to go with me, and it's helped, you know? And so, and then I've done a lot of cities. So that's kind of the brief introduction to me, how I got into it was, frankly, I enjoyed working with Ben, I enjoyed helping cities. And then I decided, I was kind of tired of helping big bureaucracy companies with their research. And so I, I kind of said, I want to do this full-time for cities, and that's what I do now. And I do help friends and an occasional client who wants their help, my help. But in general, I've made the switch, and we're devoted to cities and towns. So there were a couple of questions that were sent to me. Well, first, maybe I'll show you what we do and how it works and what it looks like, and how, and what that is, and then I'll keep that short, and then I can answer some of your questions on the backend. So the first thing I'm going to do, I'm going to show you, I'm going to show you Bernie's survey. And you tell me if you can see this now that I have it up. Can you see it?
Yes.
We can see it.
Okay. Now, this isn't the survey. This is what Bernie got, right? This is the dashboard. And I'm going to show you a few things here on the survey. So for example, in Bernie, we said, we show everybody this map. And we say, where do you live on the map? And some people live in Area 1, and Bernie gave me this survey, or this map. And some people lived in Area 2, and 3, and 4, and 5. And frankly, some cities, I've made them much more beautiful than this if they let me, but Bernie wanted to use theirs. And so anyway, as you can see on this, people tell us where they lived, and they got really good representation throughout the city. And in their case, they got 1,200 responses. Now, actually, they got more than this, but some people lived outside of the city. And so I removed the people who were not, who didn't live in the city. And we also got rid of a few people who cheated, meaning they took the survey many, many times from the same IP address, and we got rid of them. And, and also, we removed a few people because it's available online. We removed some people who were out of the country. And clearly, they weren't in the city, from the city. And so we removed some cheaters that way. So we made sure they had a really clean database of people from the city. After we did, I showed him the demographic characteristics. And it's a little, Skews is a little bit older. They didn't get very many younger people. But he said, that's pretty close to what they have inside the, inside of Bernie. And so it was pretty represented by age and by gender. We got a good mix of males and females. We got a good mix of people who are younger, newer in the city, and older in the city. So they felt pretty good about that. And we got a lot of people who don't have children, which he said was true in their population, but we got quite a few who did. So we were able to look at the population. So that was very, very helpful. And, and then the main survey is divided into a couple of parts. One of them is just kind of about the city, like would they refer the city to a friend? And so we're able to show them the ratings here of would they refer them to a friend. We have a zero to 10 rating if they would refer it to a friend, and so we got that. We also got things like, is the city going in the right direction or the wrong direction on the right-hand side? They're about 50/50, a little bit mixed in that city. Has it gotten worse or improved? And in their city, things had gotten a little bit worse. By the way, this is the second year, and it's improved a little bit from the first time we did it. And so they're feeling good about the direction that they're going. And we're even able to show them the direction of the city by zone. There are some areas on the map where, they're doing really good. So they're doing really good in Areas 4 and 5 on the map. I want to show you that map again. If we do the area, remember, you know, we had the map here. And so some areas are doing really quite well, and other areas are suffering. So they know that Area 1 needs a little bit more love and attention, and maybe even Area 2 and 3 a little bit. So they can figure out to focus in certain areas. Also, in their case, we asked, how long have you lived in the city? And the right direction and the wrong direction is heavily influenced by the people who've been there a long time versus the newer people who they're much more likely to feel were going the right direction. And that's common in cities, and it might be true for yours. And so anyway, we're able to do that for them. I didn't show you one thing, and I'm going to show it to you right now. And Jason brought it up. But over on the right-hand side, you see we have these filters, and he mentioned them. And so what you can do is you can say, well, I would like to look at females. And so now we've got females. And I would like to look at females who have children in the home. And so here you got the moms with kids. And right there, you're able to see what they think. And this would be true on any page in the survey. So the sample size is less, we're down to 255 people who were females with children, but you can do that. Or you can say, I would like to look on any page at people who live in Area 1 or 2, right? And so we can do that on the fly and see how they're doing. And as you'll remember, Area 4 was doing pretty good because I showed you that. But you can do that on any page, and then you can go through every page and just kind of look at Area 4 and see what they think about. So we could do that for Nova Sotid as well, your city. I'm going to pause right there. We've introduced a fair amount, and before I keep on going, I want to just make sure, and do you have any questions before I continue on and show you other things that we deliver for them and why it's helpful?
It probably said that in there, but how do you identify the, who it's sent to? Is it from our utility database?
Yeah, so Ron, once you hit how you, how we're going to get, how we're going to distribute this out.
Right. So it all, every city's a little bit different, and it all depends on what you have. But from most cities, the helpful thing is to ask for the utility billing list, and then I send out the invites on those. But you can send them out as well, however you want to do it. But if I send them out, I can keep track of who's responded, and I can send reminders a couple of three or four times to try to get other people without continuously reminding somebody who already has responded. But we also, it's good to get it out there with Facebook and your social media, and it's great to get it out there with your website. And it maybe is not a bad idea to put posters up around in various places, like the library and, and the city offices and so forth. Maybe even, you know, but whatever your, whatever your distribution tools are, we want to use all of them if we can. And I, we tend to get our best response from email and also from SMS, if you're able to do SMS, but some cities do and some cities don't do SMS. I can't do them for a city legally, but a city can do them. And so whatever tools, we'll use them all. And typically, we can get around a 10% to 15% response rate for a city. So you have, you have what, you're, you're not quite, 9,000, right? Are you 8,000 or 9,000 now?
About 8.
Yeah. So then we should be able to get 800 responses, and that'd be kind of, but that's, but that's 8,000 adults, right? So we need to maybe pull out the children, and so maybe we're going to get around 700 or 600, or 600 or 700 from your city would be typical. But we can get more, because in my city, we got about a 30% response rate, and some are just very engaged, and you do. And some are a little less engaged, and you struggle, you know? But, but 10% is normal.
Along that question, I was, what I want to make sure is that all stakeholders are being contacted. It could be business owners who may not-
Yeah, I think that's very healthy. I totally agree with that.
Right. So we'll, we'll use all avenues possible. The ministerial alliance, most of the businesses downtown, we'll reach out to downtown businesses. When we reached out to-
Work through the Chamber maybe?
Yeah, the Chamber. One thing, when we did our strategic plan, we did our stakeholder meetings, we had a multitude of emails we sent out. Again, so we will use all our email contacts that we have and send this out, definitely.
Yeah. It's a good way to do it. And also, the one thing I do is I give you, it's the same survey link, but with a little, a little addition to the end. And we can tell, if we use those different links, we can tell where they came from. And it's very helpful. So we say, these, you know, we got a good response from our emails, we got a good response from our whatever, and a pretty poor response from something else. And that'll just inform us the next year of how we want to do it, or the next time we do it, how we want to improve, and maybe what we can do to make things even stronger in the years that follow, if you want to do a multi-year approach. Yeah. So very helpful. Now, I want to show you, the next thing I want to show you is with, with Bernie, and with every city that we're working on here, I want to show you the basic design and what was so helpful to them. And, and also, so we needed to ask a lot of questions about a lot of services in the city. And when I got, when I got Bernie's, the first city, and frankly, every city has kind of followed the same pattern. They had questions about facilities. They had questions about benefits of living in the city. They had questions about growth and development. They had questions about safety and security. And they had questions about mobility and infrastructure. And in some cities, we call it operations. It all depends. They wanted to change it in Bernie a little bit the second time around. But there are five major areas: facilities, benefits, growth, and development. And the way we made the survey shorter was we did it in two steps. Step one, we asked people what's most, what's important to them. And so as you can see on the bottom here, we say, look over the city facilities and events below. Which two should the city devote more time and resources to enhance? So each person looks down this list, and they pick the two that are most important to them. And as you can see, a lot of people picked city parks and open spaces, and a lot of people picked the Bernie City Lake. If I go to another city and I do the same thing, and here's another city, they also like the city parks and open spaces, but they like the trail system and the library and so forth, right? So it all depends. We'll do the right thing for your city. We'll look through the city facilities and events, and we'll pick the ones that are right for you. And then we'll ask the people to select the two that are, that they think the city should devote more time and resources to enhance. After they pick their two, we go to the next question, which are benefits. Now, benefits are not things the city is directly responsible for, but they are things the city can support and encourage, and people care about a lot of these things. And so we find out which two of these they think the city should support and encourage more, right? Again, each time. And then if, if it was picked as their favorite two, they only rate the ones that they said are important to them. They don't rate the other eight or whatever that they didn't pick. We do the same thing for growth and development. Which two are most important to you? And if it was important, how are we doing? And it's very, very powerful, because you can look at this page, I'm looking at growth and development, and you can look at this page, and they wondered about Airbnbs. Should we manage short-term rentals? And 4% of the people said, yeah, we should do that, right? And they rated you rather poor on it. But across your population as a whole, it was a pretty low-important item to focus on and improve. And it becomes very, very helpful for you to look at city facilities. I'm going back up to the top one again. And you can say, should we focus on the visitor center? Or the volunteer opportunities like park cleanup? Or should we focus on, where should we focus, right? And, and if there's a tie in importance, maybe you focus on the things that are more important. In Bernie, they were wondering about the pool. And the pool is important to certain people, but overall, it's of secondary importance, right? And so it's not like they're going to ignore the pool, but they, when they're making decisions about things, they're going to think about that. Safety and security works the same way. What's most important to you? And again, we'll get your list of safety and security items that will be most important to you. And if it is important to people, we'll ask people to rate it, or importance. And you can see fire prevention programs is low importance, and some people think we need to do a little bit more there. But city neighborhood safety patrolling is super high importance for them, and it also is an area for improvement. So you're able to kind of see the gap. And also, I'm going to look at their last one, they did mobility and infrastructure. And most cities have done, it's slightly different. They've done city operations, which I think both work. And then, and then they pick their most important one. Now, so when you've gone through these five different areas, you, about 50 attributes have been rated. But people have only had to give a rating for 10, which takes a survey from about 20 minutes down to shorter, right? It makes it considerably shorter. But the next page, and I think this is kind of the most important page of all pages, the next page is the overall importance. So after they've gone through those five areas, everybody's picked two out of each, or their most important 10. I picked my most important 10. Each of you would have picked your most important 10. And then we say, here's a list of the 10 issues you selected. From these, which three are most important? So I picked my top three out of the most important ones. So I, they only see the ones that they picked, you know, the 10 most important ones. And they picked their top three, and that's what this list shows. So what we've done is we've taken out of those 50 attributes, I'm only showing 20 on this page, but you're seeing the 20 most important things that people have picked out of all of them. And it's super helpful when you're doing your planning and budgeting to go and look and see what's most important and how are we doing. And some things, like the city pool, I'm down at the bottom here. The city pool, 4% of the people picked that in their top three, right? But a lot of people did not. And, and you can see there's room to improve on the pool, and the city can focus on the pool, and they know it's in the top 20. It's not, you know, it's not in the top 50. You know, it's not like, you know, it's in the top 20, but they may choose to focus on other things before they get to the pool if they're going to wrestle through things and make prioritization. And I'm going to pause right here, and I'm going to leave this up and take your questions and see if I've maybe made this clear enough for you.
Any questions?
Well, something that we've always fought with, and I know it's not just the city, but probably every organization that provides any kind of a service is trying to figure out where people get their information. Where do they go, you know? Where, what's their preferred mode, I guess, of obtaining information from?
That's a, that's a great question, and let me come to that. Because in Bernie, they, after they went through the top questions here, which takes about seven or eight minutes, they, we, they had room on their survey for three additional questions, right? And actually, they did four. So one of them was about communications, just like you mentioned here. And they wanted to know what information people would like from the city. And so we gave them a list, and people picked those, you know, what they'd like to see, and then the preferred way of receiving it. And so you don't have to do this question, because this is an optional question at the end, but that's one that Bernie wanted to do, right? And it, and they found this very helpful to them to figure out where to prioritize the information to put out and how to deliver. So that's an excellent question. What kind of information would you like to receive from the city and how would you prefer to receive it? Several cities have asked this, and by this point, I can probably even give you comparisons to what other cities have asked. Bernie also asked a few other things. One thing they asked toward the end, they said, look, these are all of the activities we do in the city. Like they do something called Dickens on Main and the Beinach's Parade. They have a German parade, and the movies in the park. So they do those, and we asked, which ones are very important to your family? And so they got the ratings here. And that really helped them prioritize the ones that people seem to care about the most. And also, if they're not caring about it, to think about, well, what can we do to make some of these things even more appealing to more people? And again, on this one, you can say, yeah, well, what do the guy, what do the men think? And what do the women think, right? And so that's something you can, really no difference hardly to look at them. But you can look at men and women, and older people and younger people, and so forth. You can do that. So they did communications, they did importance of city events. They also did another one, this is kind of interesting. These are things that they're thinking about doing in the future, but they have not agreed as a council where to go. And so they wondered about, well, should we add new roundabouts? And what about the, expanding the cemetery? And what about city beautification with landscaping and monuments and so forth? And what about open space preservation? So they had these things and asked people which ones that people feel are worth using tax dollars to develop and maintain. So it's not just like a wish list. They know there's tax dollars involved here. And really, what these people wanted in this city was improved roads in and out of town. And that, that was not even, they didn't realize it would be that strong of an approval for that thing. So it's another thing that they did. And finally, one other thing, no, that's it. Those are the additional questions that they asked. One other thing I want to show you is we, we asked them, we asked in all surveys, have you had contact with city employees? And so a lot of people have, 60% in Bernie have. And so people indicated where they've had contact. And then if they have had contact, we say, well, would you rate the service you received if you've had contact in the last six months? And then you can see how the different departments are rated. And planning and zoning, I'll just say, is always a tough one. 91 people had contact with city with planning and zoning in the last six months, and here's how they rated it. And then the police department was rated pretty good, you got 156 people. And the library did even better, you know? So, but we'll do that. But overall, we've made it pretty easy for you to, first of all, we allow you to have custom questions that are right for you. Second, within a framework, like we have a framework that really works across all cities, but it's all customized, and then we leave room for your specific questions on the backend that maybe you need to have, and I'll help you do that. I have a city that just said, oh, we want to revise traffic in 10 different areas in the city, and we want to spend money to improve the, the traffic flow in certain areas. Which two do you think we ought to spend our time on? And they're getting great responses back on that, about where the traffic flow can be improved. So it's just whatever's right for you. And then we just make sure to distribute it as broadly and openly as we can. If we could get 100% response rate, it wouldn't cost you anymore. It'd be ideal. Usually, though, we get somewhere between 10% and 15% response rate.
Any other questions, council? Well, if you think of any questions, be sure to email me, and then I'll get them to Ron. And Ron, I'll get back with you next week if there are any questions.
Yeah. Turnaround time is, like he said, it's about, it's about eight weeks, but that leaves about three and a half- But that leaves about three and a half weeks for it, for, for encouraging people to take the survey. And then there's just time to get the survey developed and tested and make sure that, that, for example, when we get it to Jason, say, here's the proposed survey. He, he shares it with you and he needs to get feedback from you to make sure we get it right. Uh, and make sure any concerns you might have are being properly addressed. And so we do that. And he probably wants to get his department heads to look at it. And so, you know, it takes a couple of weeks to go through getting everyone's feedback. And so it takes about six weeks, about eight weeks, so that's about right.
And then Ron, also you want to talk about as you, as you get the, the surveys back, that you don't wait till you get the very end. You start working on at the very beginning.
Right, right. I'm gonna, I'm gonna share my screen and show you, that, that one, no, I'll just describe it. I don't need to share my screen. So what we do is after we have about, um, a week's worth of responses, I start the analysis then. Like we don't wait until the end. Because we can begin building everything. And then when new data comes in, we just refresh it and update it with the latest data. And as a matter of fact, I'll share it with Jason long before we're finalized. So that he can say, you know, I'd like to look at something a little bit differently here. And, uh, we're able to, to do that so that you don't have a long wait on the backend for the data. As a matter of fact, you only have like two or three days after we, uh, close it off before we have the data. And then there's a couple of things we need to do, just so that you know. Um, I share with Jason and his team all the comments. And we, we go through them looking for people who said, who say things that are inappropriate, right? And, and, and we remove them. Like somebody might say, call me at, and they leave their phone number, and you don't want that out there. Or, or somebody says, you need to fix the curb at, and they leave their address. And you don't want that out there, public information. So we, we withhold that, but we leave it available for your team. You have it all. And so we just make sure, that takes a couple of days on the backend to make sure we don't have anything, any surprises on anything. Because most cities, most cities, and if you go to Bernie, Texas, and if you go to almost everybody that he listed, if you go on their website, the survey is out there. The, the, the data that I showed you here, they make it publicly available. And in some cities, they make everything publicly available, but the open-ended comments. But in other cities, they say, that's okay, we cleaned the comments. Everything's available to the public. And they make it available. And, uh, and I, we just want to make it in a form that's as helpful to you as possible. And then you just stick it out on your website. And most cities say, we're going to do X, Y, and Z over the coming year because of your feedback. Thank you very much. And here's the data to support it. And it becomes very, very, very helpful for you to be able to prioritize before the public in a way that makes sense.
If we don't get, um, but let's say maybe 5% response. Then is the information valid across the population?
Yeah. It, it, it's a really good question. Anything over like 350 or 300 will be valid, right? Uh, especially if it's well distributed throughout the city. So we'll check from where they click on the map. And we'll know where it is, right, that they responded from. So anything above 300 is pretty good. And I've never had anything lower than say 450. And in, and, and in towns your size. And it could go that way, like we don't know for sure, right? We'll do our best. But anything above 350, you'd be okay. It would, that would be a plus or minus 5% response rate.
If, if we don't get that, do you leave it open? Do you leave the survey open until we can get?
Yeah, I mean, we could just do more reminders, right? So no harm in that, in the least.
Okay.
And, and you could begin making decisions with it. Um, you know, with, with the, uh, with whatever response rate we get, and we could keep going. You know, and try to keep it out longer.
Most of the time, you gotta remind people.
Even, even with the 10 to 15% return, how, how much confidence do you have that this data really represents the, the whole of the city?
I have really good confidence in it. Um, I, I, we've done it for city after city after city. And, and, um, and we read every comment very carefully. And I didn't show you how we handle the comments. And it may be worth me showing you, but we make it so that the data is so usable. And, and, and I have very good confidence. Like, we're, we're going to, uh, every citizen in the city and asking them to participate. And some do participate and some don't. And, and it just doesn't matter. And like if we did, for example, if we did a phone call to every household, some will participate and some won't. You know how it is, right? Like some people don't want to be bothered. It raises the price considerably to do a phone interview. And I, I do not suggest that, by the way. But, but because it just raises prices unnecessarily. I've done cities where they had done that. And my data came in clean and easier and more intuitive, and every bit is trustworthy.
What is the response? I noticed you offer a discount for two-year commitment, three-year commitment.
Right.
Um, after you do the first one, does the second one tend to have less response, more response? Or the third?
More, more. Uh, more response. So, so the, the more cities, yeah. So Bernie had, um, considerably less the first time and considerably more the second. And, uh, and the same with Hurst. Hurst went up by almost 30% more the second time than the first time. So I think the people who do it, and my, my hypothesis, like this is like, I don't know exactly all of the functioning behind it. But my, my hypothesis is the people who did it before say, this is a short survey to take and it worked, and it's pretty easy to do. And I'm going to do it again this year, right? And then we get more people who didn't take it the time before because friends talk to friends and so forth like that. And, and, but, um, yeah, we get an increased, every city has had an increased response rate the second time.
Do you get radical shifts in their priorities?
No, the priorities don't. They, they have changed a little bit. So, so I'll give you an example. So in, in, um, in Keller, um, uh, they, they had, the, 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 the ratings, the ordering is about the same. But the city focused on a variety of things and the ratings improved, right? So they had one where there were some pretty low ratings on school safety. And of course, this was just after a shooting somewhere, right? And people were nervous about it. And so then the next, so, so the, the, the police did quite a bit to support that. Um, uh, school safety and to be a presence there and to show that they were a presence there. And the priority remained the same, but the rating improved drastically, right? And, and so those are the kinds of things that happen where the ratings, um, but the ratings, it's like moving the Titanic, I'm telling you, in a city. Like, i- it's hard to move, make a big shift in one year, but you can make, you can make shifts. Um, my city made some really good shifts, by the way, in one year. And it was that, you know, the city council paid really good attention to it and, and it was acknowledged. You know, there, there was some feeling that, that things had improved. Um, hope, I think, yeah, that things are headed in, in a better direction.
Well, and with the growth room that we're seeing over the next year and two years, that would bring in a lot more possible respondents too, I guess. Be primarily new residents.
Correct.
Yeah.
Any other questions, council? Thank you, Ron, appreciate it.
No, it's been an honor to speak with you. Thank you. It's a beautiful, yeah, it's a beautiful council room here. I love it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Ron, I'll get back with you.
Okay, take care. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Ready for item four?
Ready for the next item.
Workshop item to discuss results from RW Hardin and Associates for the groundwater availability study for the city of Napa Sosa.
I'm going to bring Jennifer up first and then, uh, she can introduce the guest that she has before.
Good evening, Jennifer Rayner, Public Works Director. Tonight I have Liz with RW Hardin, uh, here to present the, uh, water, uh, groundwater availability, uh, for our upcoming well that we are requesting. Uh, Liz, come on up. We also have Blal, uh, here as well for any additional questions, uh, on, on the wells as well.
The well as well, the well as well.
Good evening, thank you for having me. Uh, my name's Liz Berry. I'm a, um, hydrogeologist with RW Hardin and Associates. And I've been in the field for almost 20 years now. This is the results of our study that we did for the city of Napa Sosa. Maybe? Okay, thank you. All right, so this is, um, the objective. City, as you know, is seeking additional water supply, um, from groundwater, from additional wells. The flow rate or the capacity, um, about 1,200 gallons per minute. And we started with a potential development site that Blal has presented to us. And then we just, uh, did our evaluations of the local groundwater resources that you have within the vicinity of your city. So here's, um, a ma- map showing the study area. It, um, kind of encompasses the city, the existing wells that the city has. And then the proposed just to the east. Um, this also shows the three, uh, principal aquifers that we're looking for. So you have to the north, the farthest, uh, northern section is the Catahoula. And they kind of outcrop in bands, except for the Brazos Aluvia, the Aluvium Aquifer. And then south of that, you have the outcrop of the Jasper. So the Jasper is kind of the youngest formation. Catahoula is older, it's beneath the Jasper. And then on top of it all, you have the Brazos River Aluvium Aquifer that flows, uh, the portions of the Brazos River. And then, go ahead. And so I, I kind of put these in there for reference. Um, up dip, and I'll get into this, uh, in the next slide, but up dip is kind of where the shallower formations are. It's where they kind of outcrop. So when I mention up dip areas, this is where we're kind of looking at. And then down dip is to the southeast. All right, so here's some geologic cross-sections. So what a cross-section is, is it's a vertical slice into earth looking below where you're standing. Um, the map in the center shows the two cross-sections that we've looked at. So we have A to A prime, which is just showing the section of the Brazos River Aluvium. And then we have B to B prime, which is going generally, um, to the northwest, to the southeast. And what it's showing is where the Catahoula outcrops to the, if you look on the very far left of the slide, 60, 25, 701. So that's in the most, uh, northwest section of the study area. And as you move to the southeast, the formation dips below land surface. And so where your wells currently are, I don't have it plotted on here. Most of them start where the study area is along B to B prime in the center. So near that 59, 4802 well is, I think, your well number two. And it kind of taps into the top of the Catahoula. And then all your other wells extend to the southeast and are mostly in the Jasper formation. Next slide, thanks. Okay. So we did estimated, um, groundwater availability basically based on regional data. You don't really know until you drill at a site what you're going to get. You can estimate based on, um, information that we have from the state, from the groundwater management area and other area, and other, uh, resources. So we've looked at the Brazos River Aluvium and the Jasper and Catahoula and came up with a range. The Brazos is different because it's extremely variable. It's, you're limited to where the meandering stream of the river has gone over several centuries and deposited gravel. And that's where your very productive portions can be. But then 50 feet from that, you might have a lot of clay because it deposited clay. So it's extremely variable. There's ways that you can evaluate the Brazos Aluvium, um, a little bit better than just drilling a bunch of wells. And so we can get into that topic. The Jasper and the Catahoula, it's, it's more regional. And so we have regional information. The Jasper, the aquifer transmissivity, which is basically describing how quickly the water moves through the, the aquifer. So the higher the transmissivity, the more quicker it'll move and the more amount of water you can get. So in this area, in our study area, we saw that we get 4,000 to 15,000 gallons per day per foot of water. And the Catahoula can be slightly higher than that. So using, um, that information among, uh, several other parameters that we don't really need to get into, these are the overall well capacity rates that we expect to see from the different formations. Um, and as you can see, there's the reference of the up dip, down dip. So the up dip is always slightly less because you have less available drawdown. So when you pump a well, you want to have more drawdown so you can pump that water a lot more. And then in the up dip section, you're kind of working with a little bit less. So your production capacity is slower than, um, in the down dip areas. But you still could have the potential of getting, um, decent amount of water. All right, next we looked at the quality of the water. Um, again, this is based on regional information. And we did have some site-specific, yeah, a lot of your wells actually are available from the, the state database. So we're able to use a lot of that information. Um, in the Brazos, you get elevated iron manganese. That's kind of general for all aquifers. Uh, what's different with the Brazos is you do get areas of high nitrates. And that's generally where irrigation is taking place. One of the harder issues that you have to deal with potentially is you have to deal with the TCQ defining, it's called groundwater under the influence of surface water. So surface water has a lot more bacteria. Groundwater generally doesn't. So you have to monitor your groundwater where it's in shallow areas that could have that resource from the surface. The Jasper, similar iron manganese, but you also have reported, um, sites, I think it's more site-specific lead, but then you also have higher TDS or salinity, um, issues. And also in the Jasper, there's isolated areas with nitrates. But again, I think that's, um, where it's really shallow in the up, up dip areas. And it's getting influenced from agriculture. And the Catahoula, we've seen isolated arsenic and radionuclides. So those are the two that are a little bit different. Also chlorides can be a little bit higher. And that's all in turn affecting the total dissolved solids. Um, this is just a summary of the permitting that'll have to be done with Bluebonnet. They require phase one, phase two hydrogeologic reporting. A lot of this information that we've come up with can be utilized in the phase one. Phase two is site-specific results. So we'll do, after you get your well in and you drilled and, and you've done your aquifer testing, we'll use that to update our modeling and come up with these parameters for your permitting. They have, so there are well spacing requirements. They're a little bit different. They base it on your results of modeling. If you're, if we see high impacts relatively short distances, they're going to want to expand, um, the, the radial distance so you're not impacting others around you. With the Jasper and the Catahoula, there's, there's never really any significant, um, radial impact unless you're more than, you know, 2,000 feet from each other. And, and generally where you are, you're, you're safe with that. Production limitations. So their, um, results of how much they can limit you for production is also based on the reporting and the results that you get from your site-specific testing. Um, so they can set limits if they notice your production capacity at the aquifer at that well site isn't great, they could try to limit you, um, on your production. Or if they see that it's going to impact, um, in terms of, um, drawdown or other users, they could try to restrict your pumpage. Okay, next slide. So this is the conclusions, recommendations. Um, the Brazos River, again, extremely variable. You can get very high production capacity, but then next, right next to it, you can get a lot less. It would require some sort of treatment or blending and monitoring of the, the GUI. Is what we call it, groundwater under the influence. Um, what you could do is surface geophysics. And so this is laying a line of, um, probes and, and shocking the area. And you get resistivity shot into the ground and you can find higher productive zones than, um, compared to lower productive zones. So it's less invasive, you're not drilling. Um, the Jasper aquifer, let's see, so based on the production capacities, you could likely get your, um, meet your needs with at least two wells. It may also require treatment or blending. And then what we would definitely recommend is doing a temporary well testing program to figure out your parameters prior to construction of your, uh, permanent well. And then the Catahoula, similar, um, recommendations, and then also will require the treatment blending. Do you have any questions?
So, uh, our location on Highway ninety that we're looking at, is that ideal? Um, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, that's the first question.
Yeah, so that's what we were afraid of, why we did the study.
Right.
And what we found, though, is you have three aquifers there, to look at, and so the hope is you can get two wells on that site that will supply the water you need at, on that site, does that make sense, instead of one?
Okay.
Most likely what we're hoping for.
So two wells on that site?
Right, right. So we need to do a little negotiation to fit two wells on, which, but we can make that work, so.
Okay.
Because they can be right next to each other.
Okay.
Yeah, so what you can, yeah, if you, you just want to make sure when you're drilling, this is land surface, so you're not gonna drill on top of each well, so you, you space those part. And then if you're producing from individual zones and not impacting your well, that's gonna be the most favorable.
Okay. So if we go bigger on top, it would be less ground storage at that location? Or we move ground storage to another location, and then possible free up space?
Right, so the, the options we hoped would happen here was that we can build, this is your high service too, so you want your biggest plant here, if you can get it there.
Right.
Um, if we can get the, the water. So you may have to have a, a third well further off in the future, in a different location. But, yeah, you would want ground sto- you want the full plant, you want the ground storage and elevated all on this high-service area if you can.
Okay.
If we find out we just can't, then we'll have to switch gears. Your ground storage is all you just built on the low-service side, so.
Okay.
Makes sense.
And, and where would the possible third well need to go?
Thousand feet away, roughly.
To which direction?
Anywhere. Thousand or more, so it's not interfering with the aquifer.
So we could just go, we could go south if we needed to?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
And then it's just the cost of pumping it back to that plant site versus-
Gotcha, okay. Okay.
So really, what she recommended was a test well, all three aqu- we're gonna test all three aquifers, and find out what you have in quantity and quality, and that'll set the stage for what you can do. But you won't know that till you actually drill to test it.
So we, it, it, you're, you are recommending moving forward with the Highway ninety location?
Yes, with at least one well there.
One well, okay.
Possibly two.
Two, okay.
With the amount that you can pump out, how many, how many, huh? What's the, what's the amount of water that one home uses, and we know that we were expecting a certain number of houses to go on this new property? How, how quickly do we run out of well one?
So TCQ, yeah, point six gallons per minute per connection, per house, is what they go by. So zero point six times however, however many homes you have, it's a capacity. But what you want to consider is the peak demand, technically that does, but you want to consider kind of a, a full peak full-on scenario where you're gonna have to pump your well twenty-four seven for ninety days. Probably mo- not likely, but it could happen.
Yeah, so sixty gallon a minute, it's a hundred homes. And then, you know, you, she was talking about, talking about trying to get twelve hundred gallons a minute up there. So.
But, eh, any idea, I have no idea of this question. Chuck Norris is getting water out of the ground?
Yes.
Where is his coming from? That's what we, we need to kind of find.
It's most likely the Chuck Norris Aquifer. I don't know. Yeah, I've talked to every, the district knows about it. Um, there's very limited information, and, and what's ironic is I plotted, you, I plotted, I plotted all the wells. I look at all these wells. I've become very familiar with them, and it's, it's like a really good wells and really bad wells, and, and by bad, it could be production, it could be water quality. And I'm like, what is this really good well? Is it this place found out it's Chuck Norris well? So then I get the driller that says, what aquifer is that? I'm like, I don't know, the Chuck Norris Aquifer. Um, so I, yeah, but I've seen if, a long strike, I've, um, drilled wells, and a long strike means following that band, that aquifer, um, at similar depths, and it comes up flowing. I mean, it's the same, it's the same scenario. So that Catahoula is known to do that, but it's also known to not produce at all. So it's just, he just knew where to drill.
Just came to him.
That's where I'm gonna go.
Jennifer, push the button, please.
L seven's our biggest producer. Will they, will the other wells, if we need two wells on ninety, will they rotate in on high water usage only, or will we continue to use six and seven, and then rotate four and five into the use?
Yeah, so your wells to the south all go to your main water plant now.
Correct.
This is plan O G.
So that, that would just, that would be the new source for the new elevated and the new water plant.
Right, and the reason we want the most, it's a high service, so it will naturally gravity serve the rest of the town.
Any anticipated issues with the groundwater conservation district? I mean, because I don't, I've never had any-
Yeah, so they're currently, I, I've, I've dealt with, I'm dealing with them now, um, with permitting, and I've never had issues with them. Um, we work really well together. Um, I know Zach appreciates our work and our firm, so I don't, I don't see any issues, and if we do see anything upfront, we're gonna let you know. Um, you know, in terms of, the main things they, they look at are impacts to other wells and subsidence. Um, subsidence, we'll do the modeling to evaluate that. It's generally not an issue in this area. And the impacts to other neighbors, we're gonna make sure that there's nothing that's gonna be too harmful, because that doesn't help anybody. And I, yeah. So it's pretty straightforward. They're going through rule changes. Most of it's, um, it's nothing significant, so. There's other districts, there's a lot going on right now, in a lot of districts, so. The changes they're, they're doing, shouldn't impact what, what y'all look to.
Man, that's all I have on the workshop.